So, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning order appeals for Cold Spring. We have Allison and Tom, we have Aaron Wolf, we have Elliot Hammond, I'm Rick Dunham, the chairman. And right now, the only thing in front of us, yay, is a workshop for 12 Locust Ridge. I'm just gonna read the dial, I'll hand it right back. Basically, it's a one-story addition, this is a corner lot, and such front yards are required on both street frontages per village code, yada, yada, yada. Front yard setback on Mountain Avenue is nineteen point three, twenty foot required. So, per at least this, they need a single variance, but we'll go through this and if we see something. Because it's not unusual, so we'll pick something up that maybe the inspector didn't. We have an application, we have a deed, we have a conformance sheet, we have a short environmental assessment form. We have a, yeah, this is a survey, and we have a site plan. On the application, we have the following buildings. So, this is twelve, so we have ten Locust Ridge, which I would agree with, is next to fifteen Locust Ridge, which is across the street, right?
Yes.
Eleven Locust Street, which is across.
The corner.
Is the corner. It's that what's-her-face.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Shelley, I think that's Shelley. Ten, ten dash fourteen Cedar Street.
That's American Legion.
Right.
Cedar.
Yes. And then fifteen Cedar Street being.
There's a house on the corner of Mountain Ave and Cedar as it continues past Mountain Ave, so it's across Mountain.
Oh, yeah.
Cemetery.
It's the one, it's the one up on the hill?
Well, it's not so high, you really don't see it from Mountain because there's so many trees, but.
It's right next to the cemetery.
It is on, right next to the cemetery.
Oh, it's volcano.
Oh, okay.
Yes, at least that's what, Jeff helped me get this list.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, those who you never see this. By three streets, the setback part succeed on conditions for the neighborhood, propositionally standing on. Front and rear yards have requirements from, okay, so you're saying variances are custom from the front and rear.
Well, that was my understanding.
Okay, we'll, we'll walk carefully through this. This is, you know, this is a workshop, this is not merits of the case, it isn't clarity of facts.
Right.
That's, that's the main thing, is that we're all on the same page, and that A, what is the front, B, what is the rear? What's the impact? Are you drawing clear?
Yes.
So, it's not, we're not going to discuss merits.
Okay.
So. It's easier to do. Let's start with a site plan, just for kicks and giggles. And it's nice that you have all eyes. So, basically.
On the corner of Mountain.
Corner, right, now, and then Cedar.
So, basically, this lot stands the entire, the entire block.
According to Jeff, and I would refer to anybody else, that that, this one and Chatsel next door are the only ones that actually have access both all the way through like that. Because Chatsel has a garage in the back, as well as the plan.
Can I give you, do you need to read this?
No.
Good. So, the gray hashed area, you can come sit.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's the addition.
That's the addition.
Well, the addition is actually the double hatch. So, that's existing, one story.
Right.
And then this is proposed new. We're gonna build the whole thing new, but.
So, you're tearing this down?
Well, down to the foundation.
And then you're just gonna add five feet, six inches?
Six, yes.
So, one-story addition, so, oh, okay, so it's, excuse me for my ignorance.
Would it help to look at your elevations? I took you at your word that you didn't want to just extremely drawings, but.
Actually, I think it would help just, you know, just.
And I can bring them, you know, I can mount them and make it more formalized for the hearing.
The landing in the back is also new?
Yeah, that's covered.
And that's covered?
Not covered.
Says new roofed landing and stuff.
Oh, excuse me, I beg your pardon, it is covered.
So, that should be shaded on the, also, right?
In terms of F A R?
It's covered?
It is covered. So, it is included in the F A R, but I could definitely shade it.
So, it's included in the, the coverage?
Yes.
Okay.
It is included in the calculation. Here's a.
Yeah, the addition, the landing is part of the addition.
So, this is Mountain View side. Here's the bay window.
Right.
And the addition, the landing doesn't show enough, it waits in this one, on the shaft side.
Right. But I, I'm not sure if that counts as a porch or if it's part of the.
Is that covered enclosed?
No, but it, it does have a roof, which means it has to count as F A R.
It's covered, that's all it is.
That's what I'm saying, but now, so, the actual, if I'm reading this wrong, it's five foot six enclosed part, but then there's an eight foot.
Eight foot goes beyond that, yeah.
So, it's thirteen feet?
That's true, in terms of new construction.
New construction, thirteen feet.
Yeah.
So, that's, so you need the variance from.
No, because it's just, it wasn't, we don't need the variance on this side at all.
No, but I'm just saying, it's total thirteen feet that's being added on to the, to the house.
But the setbacks are twenty-five feet from the front, which the.
And twenty in the rear.
And twenty in the rear, we're nowhere near it.
So, we're only going to the side.
Even, even the side.
That's a two, that's a considering front yard, right?
Yeah, the, the Mountain Avenue was considered.
I see where the difference, I'm looking at the difference, it's nineteen-three because of the window.
Right.
Yet, it's only, it's twenty-three-three.
Before, for the, for the corner, yeah.
From the, if you look at the.
Yeah.
But you gotta go from.
You gotta go from.
Gotta go from the window.
Well, that's the worst case.
If you were a flat window, you wouldn't even be coming to us.
Well, we would, we would, because it's still only twenty-three feet, not twenty-five.
High feet, yeah.
Are twenty, are twenty-five a side?
Wait, 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 what? Let's define, what is front yards?
I thought it was twenty-five.
No, no, just top, just what, what are we considering in front?
Mountain.
Mountain.
And locusts.
And locusts.
Okay.
Okay, so those require twenty-five, twenty-five setback.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, my, my point in asking about the landing was when we have the, the hearing, that should be shaded on the document, so people can see that it's new.
Yeah. And you can just handwrite it, you don't have to take this back to architecture.
Don't go back to the, here we.
I mean.
No, I'm the architect, so I can be the, I can play the.
She called up her CAD program.
All right, it's great, okay. We try to eliminate, we try to ease up on the cost, the expensive things.
But will we need new printed copies, or I could bring one that's mounted to point to?
We would need, we would need at least four printed. Because I have to distribute this stuff at the end as well.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure out what, just to.
Yeah, I have to, I have to have at least four copies to distribute.
Each board?
Us and, and board and on the.
Okay.
I mean.
The four's enough?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, because we'll shade these.
Okay.
Yeah, so. So, nineteen-three, well, he's, then this is not.
He's not right, because he says twenty here.
And it should be twenty-five. Okay, and that's exactly why we're here. So, the denial would be for, oh, God, five.
Five and, five and a fraction.
Five and a fraction, yeah, five point seven or something, or five, yeah, five point seven feet. So, that would be, the variance you're requesting would be for five point seven feet. For the mountain, mountain avenue.
Front yard.
Not for the locusts.
No, you don't need that, right.
Right.
You're fine in locust.
Yeah, you're within, so, we're, he's still right, that right now, we're looking at a single variance.
Yes, to me, I just, I know it's, it's, front yard's already established, so to me, it should be just this way. We shouldn't have to worry about that.
No, there's two front yards.
It says it's a corner lot.
I know, it's a corner lot, but I just, to me, when you're gonna establish a house, that's when that should count.
Yeah.
The way I'm looking at it, this is already established, this is already the front yard, everything's built toward the front yard, so it should be a rear yard. Merit that they should be looking for, not here, because the house is already here. I was always under the impression, once I was on a board.
If you're in a corner, if you're in a corner lot.
Yes, you have two, but your building, you could decide which is what.
Because you, you want, you want the feeling of the, of the yard space to be.
But what you get to decide, what you get to decide is whether this is a front or a rear, or a rear or a side, or a rear or a side. This has to be a front, those two have to be fronts.
And Shelley, to jump ahead, I had, I had.
On your conformance.
On the, on the conformance worksheet, I'm showing the rear yard, what, from Mountain View, considering Mountain View as a front. The rear yard associated with that front should be twenty, and is only sixteen point seven. Again, that's the existing house, doesn't have anything to do with our addition, that's this here.
Right.
But is that, is that a side yard or is that a?
Well, it's a rear yard from Mountain.
It's a rear yard from Mountain, but there's no new construction.
Correct.
Within that, so, you know, it's, it's, this is grandfathered in, so we don't have to address it.
Well, but the bay is grandfathered in then too.
What?
The bay is also grandfathered in.
If the bay is grandfathered in, we don't have to deal with anything.
The bay is existing?
Yes.
Yeah, it's been there.
The bay's been there.
But, but this is not existing, right here.
Just that part there. This part here is existing, this is not.
That's over the dash line.
Right.
But no.
And so, okay, so that's.
That's.
Yeah, but we're still, it's still gonna be a five point, five point seven, because it's new.
No, it would only be twenty-three point, one point five. Or one point sev, one point seven.
Okay, because it was twenty-five, it's twenty-three five, so it's one point.
In a situation like this, haven't we normally granted the variance to include all of the existing building?
Yeah, we include all the grandfathered stuff.
If the new.
So that it lists everything and gets that dotted and sipped.
In other words, it's best to go with the, you're right, we have done the most conservative. I mean, we could do it the other way, and we would be okay, we'd be acceptable, but to do it this way, it's the most conservative.
In that we're acknowledging, we're granting the variance for even the pre-existing stuff.
But that, I think that's actually in the best interest of the owner too, that they have everything legalized.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't allow you to, to build something other than what you've shown us.
What?
Because we're agreeing to that in light of, you know, because.
So, I can't, we can't suddenly make the whole addition come out to the nineteen-four three, it's only.
Because these, these get stamped.
Right.
These get stamped, and, and this is what.
Understood.
The inspector, that, when they go through inspections, this is what they have to meet.
Yeah, but if you want to do that, you could apply for that.
Well.
No, nothing here.
That's true.
More work.
Wait, as a matter of fact, the addition was larger once, a few months ago, but we pared it down, it went clo, went past, but that's not useful.
So, we're looking for, it's gonna be.
We're still, we're still gonna go with five point seven.
Yep.
So, people.
To, to.
You're right, to go from the, from the, from the.
The bay window.
Yeah, the bay window, so five point seven.
Or twenty-five yards, so that's on the mountain side. Everything else is within setbacks or pre-existing, with no, with no new construction related to it.
So, that means we're choosing Cedar as the backyard?
Doesn't make any difference, does it?
No, because the new construction is all.
The garage is, is already there.
It's, are you sure?
What if this wall already there?
Yes. That actually was legalized, I think, maybe as process of this, in, close to the time of the sale. They did not.
What was that?
This existing brick wall. Maybe it was, that's in, I could dig that paperwork out, but, well, it didn't have anything to do with me, but they did, the owner, new owners passed it on to me.
It's existing, right?
Currently.
Yeah.
Always, yeah. But this wall was recently built?
Well, it's recent as in, you know, our lifetime.
Our life, yeah.
But if it's not before nineteen seventy-two, is what we decided, something to him?
No, I don't think it was before.
And, and it's over four feet, I'm assuming.
Ah, yeah, I'm assuming. Does it, I don't have it noted online, but maybe Glenn does.
It's grandfathered in. It wouldn't add to the confusion.
Are you, are you tearing it down?
No.
It's just there for. To keep the squirrels on the other side of the wall.
I'm not sure why they built it on the square.
Could be to keep the water away from the garage, to find, find handball.
There wa, there was a permit in nineteen ninety-eight, apparently. Excuse me, it says here, it says here, four foot by thirty-five for brick wall. This was from the, you know, when they did the search.
Per Lucy, I don't know. Well, it's four by thirty-five, so.
There.
Yeah, we don't need to worry about it, that's good. So, just a minor change to, to the site plan.
Certainly.
Is there enough dimensions here? You were talking about dimensions on the last site.
Yes, because I thought that it would be, would be beneficial to have the dimensions of the buildings on the plans.
But, you know, in this, she has dimensions of the new.
She does have the dimensions of the new.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I, you know, in what we're dealing with, I'm not sure we really need the dimension of the existing.
No, I don't, I don't.
Other, other than, other than.
You know, she got overlaid, she got it on here, right.
How did you, how do you, but nobody ever gives us exactly how many different numbers, to be honest. I mean, Donald, Donald sat there and he could do it.
I, I will, I will say, because since you asked me and I gave me the wrong answer, it wouldn't seem as though maybe I had included the covered porches, but the existing covered porch is a hundred and forty-five square feet, and the proposed covered porch is is two hundred and forty-three, so.
It's additional.
So, I did add that into, just the covered porch.
Where is the existing covered porch?
There isn't, there isn't an existing covered, oh, excuse me, in the front, there's existing covered porch.
So, what is your lot coverage, just, I, it can't be anywhere close to.
No, it's only twenty, it looks like twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, I'm just curious.
It's nineteen by ninety point eighteen, hence it.
Anywhere close to.
You've got that, all that incline, you know, the hill.
It's pretty steep.
Yeah, very steep.
So, we meet in two weeks. Anybody feel that we're not ready to move forward?
I think we're ready, I think, I think the Chili Street's rolling.
Okay, and that's what I kind of thought it would be. It's just, again, we're just, we're niggling, we're niggling on, just make sure our numbers agree, moving forward.
Or no plans with covered.
With the printed, with the shaded.
On the new ones, the rest of them will just cover.
Okay.
Yeah.
You gotta send out the notices.
And I do that, correct?
Yeah, I, I'll go write a notice tomorrow to the PCNR, and I will send you a copy. Yeah, I got your email, sorry, C C R, this is general, right, okay. So, what I send down, I will send to you.
I print it out.
You print it out, and that's, and that's what you.
Turn with you.
With the green, little green thing sent to the meeting.
Yeah, certified.
You don't get any responses?
Do we, do we feel a need for an elevation, or not? I mean, I'm, it, it was informed at tonight, I don't know, if you could just, actually, if you bring it for the public to look at, and if anybody has any questions.
Yeah.
But I don't think in terms of the application, that it's gonna.
Because this is a one-story addition, right?
Yeah.
And you put behind a two-story house, so, it's not, it's not the same as other things you've been dealing with, that we wanted.
So, for, for our.
Not gonna lose their sight of the map.
For our needs, for our needs, I don't think we need it, bring it.
Here.
Bring it.
In case, in case anybody in the, in the public wants to see it.
I, I will say that I had eight or whatever copies of the whole set printed, but then I read the application again, and I saw you said you didn't want access.
Well, I mean, technically, we don't care about elevations.
But I, I'm only saying is I have them, I've given them to you.
Yeah, well, but, you know, we never know what the public's gonna want to see, and we're raised, and it's only gonna have this.
Really, ninety percent of the meetings, the public don't show up anyway.
Right.
So, you, you, you'll send out six of those notices, you might get one or two persons that call.
Responding.
That'll respond, and they'll say, yeah, I like it, others sit there, won't say anything.
Well, that's wonderful, because I've been in some really contentious meetings.
We've had, we've had a few.
We've had a few in those days, yes.
The back part of the house is only gonna be one story total, it's done.
Yes.
Right, because we're not adding one story on top of.
Nope.
No, it's just.
And you're, they're tear, you're tearing the whole thing down and rebuilding?
Uh, down to the foundation, we'll extend the existing. Oh, no.
No, no.
Just that one.
Just the, just the.
It's a beautiful old house.
It's a great old house, yeah.
Oh, no, just this one-story business in the back.
Okay.
And between you and me, I would love to, I'd love to restore more, it really is a special old house.
It's a great old house.
They're not, they're not adding to it.
I think that was Dr. Genesi's house.
Was a doctor, yeah, I did it, yes.
My dentist.
Oh, really?
Yes.
The front, because the front room, I understand, was the.
The dentist's office. Dr. Genesi, been there for years.
And just to be clear, the, the people who bought the house, their daughter and son-in-law live right down Locust Ridge with four kids, and he, I've forgotten his, his last name. He has the industrial arts room in Garnaville, and that's, they're local, and they, the reason they want to be here is for the kids.
That's great.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, that, yeah, the, the, this, I, I'd forgotten that guy lived on Locust Ridge, the guy from industrial arts.
Yeah, I've forgotten his name, she's gone completely out of mind.
O'Neill.
Yeah.
So, two weeks is eight seventeen.
And, and when do the notices need, what, how much time?
Yeah.
Like, if they go out tomorrow?
Well, I, that's fine.
Or Saturday?
Yeah, they can go out Monday, you know.
Even Monday, I mean, you know.
I would not push it past there, because.
The only thing is, I have to have it to PCNR by Monday morning, yeah, because it's gonna be a five-day notice for legal notices. So, that's the reason I'll, I'll do it tomorrow, I guess, I don't know.
Well, it's only six, I, I, or whatever, I.
Yeah, no, it's just I have, I have to write the notice, so the verbiage is semi-reusable.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna run and make copies of this one set of minutes that's been raging around since February.
Are we done?
Okay.
We're done with it.
We're done, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You closing it?
Nope, we got minutes, no.
Thank you.
Lots of minutes.
I don't have a lot of minutes.
Good night, thanks again.
Did that go in, I don't know.
I think it did, I'm not sure.
Later.
Woo-hoo!
One for you. And then we'll get two for the ones. One for you, and one for you. This is from February. So, take your time and read through February.
I think it was Jimmy's last name either, that's the guy from Silverstone.
Oh, Jimmy, yeah. Going into not having, not having to make a decision on that.
Is that, that's right, we do.
Because this was, this was a workshop, I think.
Well, he's still working on it.
He's still working, yeah.
He's still doing it, it just, it went in such a way that we didn't have to.
Do what he thinks.
Zoning, zoning.
He ended up putting a steel beam in there. Is that what he did?
Well, because years ago, somebody took out two center pillars.
That'll do it, that'll do it, yeah, that'd be a big problem, yes. Um, take, I just haven't done this for one reason, and then you're screwing me up and do something else, yeah.
So, I can't read these, I would have to.
Yeah, yeah, this is good, I would agree.
But the three of us are here, right, so we, we have a quorum to.
Right.
That's all right.
I can't read them, I love them.
You can read them, you can read them, but, yeah, okay, I, I move that we approve the, the February second minutes.
There's just, I'll, I'll second before we vote, it's spoon singular.
Spoon singular, right, yeah.
Okay.
And we gotta put in Jimmy's name.
We gotta get in Jimmy's name, I can, I can find that.
Okay.
Where's, where's spoon singular?
It's in the second line, after, after the underlying space there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so, he says it's all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've passed the two.
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 The two-two.
The two-two, I thought it was two-twenty-one, but. As, as the minute, so let's look.
And then I, I move that we approve the six, the June first minutes. You know, I don't have, I was near for the last one, so.
That's all two-two. Go right there.
So, I moved that we approved the, and that was, all of us were there.
I didn't see that one.
Thank you. Is this somebody's?
So, you've sent, Tom, you've sent these by email?
I couldn't attach them to the email for some reason, that's why I printed them out.
I'm sorry?
They wouldn't attach to an email for some reason, so I printed them out, I don't know what that was about, but.
Yeah, because I, I still need electronic copy, because I need to. Yeah, because I still need electronic copy, because I need to add, I need to add, you know, it's the, my signage at the bottom. I mean, I'll do that, I'm not gonna make you, you know, this is for Tom.
Okay.
So, can I have a motion on six-one?
I move.
Second?
What's up? Aaron.
Okay, Elliot, second, it's all in favor, aye. Uh, seven-twenty, do I have a motion on those?
I don't see seven-twenty.
We're seven-twenty.
I can't.
Oh, she can. Let me make sure, President Burr, me, Aaron, Elliot. Yeah, we have them, okay. So, take five minutes.
Except.
Make motion to accept.
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a second?
Do you need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so, thank you, Tom, appreciate that.
It's, um.
But if, why wouldn't, why wouldn't they attach?
I have no idea, I was having the same problem with the last code update minutes, that must be a problem with Gmail.
What's his last name?
Aldo, I mean.
Maybe it's. So, if you, if you can't, throw it, throw it on one of the discs.
All right.
I'm serious, throw it on one of those video discs, even though it's formatted, as soon as I, if I rip it off, it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect the video, you know what I mean? Yeah, just throw it on one of the video, the cards, I mean, essentially.
Rusty cards, yeah.
The other, essentially, cards.
Right.
And if it blows up, it's my fault.
Okay.
Because I suggested it.
I move the major.
Uh, just a quick, quick future, future, you weren't here last time, Santa Vinier is raising its head again.
Yes.
Um, he is going to make an attempt to at least get variances for his lot alone without the front lot being involved.
So, he's in the one in the back?
Yes.
How's he gonna do that?
Well, he's gonna request it, we're gonna look at it, we're gonna approve it, I'm sorry, you know, but he wants, he wants to move forward with, with us. Um, and then, you know, we go to planning and then all get shot to hell, but.
Yeah, I don't see how to attack it.
That's, that's, that's his choice.
Right, he can proceed, right.
So, that's proceeding. One-twenty-six is, um, the lead agency on that is HDRB, because their seeker review, it's more, it's an extended seeker review versus a short.
That's the flower shop?
Yeah, the flower shop. Basically, the short version of this is, they either get a special permit for a front yard setback in a B-one district that's either even with everybody else on the street, because there's that special permission, so if everything's, you know, even.
Right.
You know, so we either give them that, or we give them the variance from a forty-foot setback, so, because it's gonna be, I guess, the front is gonna be about where it is now.
They're, they're tearing it down, right?
Oh, they agreed to tear it down?
They, Jevy allowed them, is allowing them to tear it down.
Well, that's, that's what we're waiting on.
That's the plan.
And, and they're gonna move it over five feet.
But she also said move it back a foot, so it wouldn't be actually on the property, I thought, when she was here.
Yeah, whatever.
She said not exactly on village property.
Yeah.
She said back a foot, so they wouldn't have a problem.
And so, and they're gonna move it over five feet, and because it's a B-one, all you need is five feet, so.
Yeah, which is good, because fire hazards, things like that, stuff. Especially now that Jevy's got a hotel up there.
Yeah, so those, those two are in front of us, um.
Maybe we'll take, no, we've got her as a public chair.
Right.
Let's take two, her, this isn't gonna be that hard.
This is gonna be easy.
Because this is.
No, it's.
Yeah, it's very straightforward.
It's very straightforward.
So, maybe do two of them that night.
Well, Santa Vinier, we could, we could start the discussion, workshop Santa Vinier again, and then she, um, Karen Parks is not available next, next week.
Till September.
It would be September, so, that's just FYI, that's what's going on, uh, other than that.
I'm sure the HBR will take their time and decide to, um, to let them rebuild, so, it's such a, such a, yeah.
That said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I, I move that be adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Great.
Outta here. Okay, final notice. He was deciding that. Move moving forward to that, and, so, but a part of that process, my understanding from, from Jeff is that he is working with the building inspector in Falls Town and making the referrals and stuff like that.
But is he still, the paperwork still goes to Jeff, and then Jeff passes it up to, Greg is his name, right?
Right, yes, Greg, the new, yeah, the Falls Town building inspector.
And then Greg passes it back to Jeff.
Yeah. That, yeah, that is my understanding, or something close to that.
I have to, yeah, yeah, good. I was chucking you the idea that Nelsonville has built.
Well, I guess they do, don't they?
Yes, they do, yes. They don't know what they're in for, but.
So, per.
Pacific Palatet, California.
Okay.
What?
The address, seven fifty Palatet Drive, California.
Yeah, they're gonna phone it in.
I can explain if you want to get to.
No, I just, I just.
It's allowed. Tom, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Are we rolling?
Yep.
Okay.
Microphone's on.
Microphone's on, cameras rolling, Dennis is here.
Great.
So, this is a earlier scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals for Falls Spring. We have Allison and Tom, we have Aaron Wolf, we have Elliot Hammond. I'm Vic Dumbey, the chairman, and right now, the only thing in front of us, yay, is a workshop for twelve Locust Ridge. I'm just gonna read the dial, I'll hand it right back. Basically, it's a one-story addition, this is a corner lot, and such front yards are required on those street frontages per village code, yada, yada, yada. Front yard setback on Mountain Avenue is nineteen point three, twenty foot required. So, per at least this, they need a, a single variance, but we'll go through this and if we see something. Because it's not unusual, we'll, we'll pick something up that may have been inspected. Um, we have an application, we have a deed, we have a conformance sheet, we have a short environmental assessment form, we have a, a, yeah, this is a survey, and we have a site plan. Um, on the application, we have the following buildings. So, this is twelve, so we have ten Locust Ridge, which I would agree, is next to fifteen Locust Ridge, which is across the street, right?
Yes.
Eleven Locust Street, which is across.
The corner.
Is the corner, um, is that what's her face, um.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Shelley, I think that's Shelley. Uh, ten, ten dash fourteen Cedar Street.
That's American Legion.
Right.
Cedar.
Yes, and then fifteen Cedar Street being.
There's a house on the corner of Mountain Ave and Cedar, as it continues past Mountain Ave, so it's across Mountain, there's the cemetery.
Oh, yeah, it's the one, it's the one up on the hill?
Well, it's not so high, you really don't see it from Mountain, because there's so many trees, but, um, but it is there.
It's right next to the cemetery.
It is on the, right next to Cedar.
Oh, it's Bochino.
Oh, okay.
Yes, at least that's what, I, Jeff helped me get this list.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, those are your notices. By three streets, the setback, I'd succeed on conditions for the neighborhood, poses a short extension, existing on conditions, so, as a step, with proportions, existing construction, both conditions. Front and rear yard setback requirements from, okay, so you're saying variances are custom from the front and rear?
Well, that was my understanding.
Okay, we'll, we'll walk carefully through this. Uh, this is, you know, this is a workshop, this is not merits of the case, it is clarity of facts.
Right.
That's, that's the main thing, is that we're all on the same page, and that, A, what is the front, B, what is the rear, what's the impact, uh, are you drawing clear?
Yes.
So, it's not, we're not gonna discuss merits.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know if it's easier to do. We'll start with a site plan, just for kicks and giggles. And it's nice that you have, oh, ice. So, basically.
These are all the driveway, these are from the back way.
On the corner of Mountain.
Corner, right, now, and then Cedar.
So, basically, this lot stands the entire, the entire block.
According to Jeff, and I refer to anybody else, that that, this one and Chatsel next door are the only ones that actually have access both all the way through like that. Because Chatsel has a garage in the back, as well as the front.
Can I give you, do you need to read this?
No.
You go. Front yard setback on Mountain Avenue is nineteen point three, twenty foot required. So, the gray hashed area, you can come sit.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's the addition.
That's the addition.
Well, the addition is actually the double hatch, so that's existing, one story.
Right.
And then this is, um, proposed new, we're gonna build the whole thing new, but, um.
So, you're tearing this down?
Well, down to the foundation.
And then you're just gonna add five feet, six inches?
Six, yes.
So, um, a one-story addition, so, oh, okay, so it's, excuse me for my ignorance.
Would it help to look at your elevations? I took you at your word that you didn't want to just extend your drawings, but.
Actually, I think it would help just, you know, just.
And I can bring them, you know, I can mount them or make it more formalized for hearing.
The landing in the back is also new?
Yeah, that's covered.
And that's covered?
Not covered.
Says new roofed landing and stuff.
Oh, excuse me, I beg your pardon, it is covered.
So, that should be shaded on the, also, right?
In terms of, uh, FAR?
It's covered?
It is covered, and it is included in the FAR, but I could definitely shade it.
So, so it's included in the coverage?
Yes. It is included in the calculation. Here's, uh.
Yeah, the addition, the landing is part of the addition.
So, this is Mountain View side, here's the bay window.
Right.
And, um, the addition, the landing doesn't show enough, it's in this one, in the Chatsel side.
Right. Although, I, I'm not sure if that counts as a porch or if it's part of the.
Is that covered enclosed?
No, but it, it does have a roof, which means it has to count as FAR, right?
It's covered, that's all it is.
That's what I'm saying, but now, so, the actual, if I'm reading this wrong, it's five foot six enclosed part, but then there's an eight foot.
Eight foot goes beyond that.
So, it's thirteen feet?
That's true, in terms of new construction.
Thirteen feet addition. New construction, thirteen feet.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that's, so you need the variance from.
No, because it's still, it's still, we don't need the variance on this side at all.
No, but I'm just saying, it's total thirteen feet that's being added on to the, to the house.
But the setbacks are twenty-five feet from the front, which the.
And twenty in the rear.
And twenty in the rear, we don't want.
We got the rear, so we're, so we're only going to the side.
Even, even the side.
That's a two, that's a, considering the front yard, right?
Yeah, the, the Mountain Avenue was considered.
I see where the difference, I'm looking at the difference, it's nineteen-three because of the window.
Right.
Yet it's, it's twenty-three-three.
Before, from the, from the corner, yeah.
From the, you look at the.
Yeah.
But you gotta go from.
You gotta go from the.
Gotta go from the window.
Well, that's the worst case.
If you were a flat window, you wouldn't even be coming to us.
Well, we would, we would, because it's still only twenty-three feet, not twenty-five feet.
Five feet, yeah.
Or twenty, or twenty-five, it's not, no.
Wait, 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 what, let's define, what is front yards?
Well, that's where we got it.
No, no, just top, just what, what are we considering in front?
Mountain.
Mountain.
On Locust.
And Locust.
Okay.
Okay, so those require twenty-five, twenty-five setback.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Twenty, okay, twenty-five, yeah. So, my point in asking about the landing was, when we have the, the hearing, that should be shaded on the document, so people can see that it's new.
Yeah. And you can just, and should not, you don't have to take this back to architecture.
Don't go back to the, here we.
I mean.
No, I'm the architect, so I can beat the bottom.
Oh, you can, you.
Yeah.
She, she pulled up her CAD program.
All right, it's great, okay. We try to eliminate, we try to ease up on the cost that's expensive these days.
I know, I appreciate that, but, but, uh, will we need new printed copies, or I could bring one that's mounted to point to?
We, we would need, we would need at least four printed, because I have to distribute the stuff at the end as well.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure out what, just to.
Yeah, I have to, I have to have at least four copies to distribute.
Each board?
Us and the board and on the.
Okay.
I mean.
The four's enough?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, because we'll shade these.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so nineteen-three, well, he's, then this is not.
He's not right, because he says twenty here.
And it should be twenty-five, okay, and that's exactly why we're here. Uh, so, the denial would be for, oh, God, five.
Five and, five and a, five and a fraction.
Five and a fraction, yeah, five point seven or something, or five, yeah, five point seven feet, so that would be, the, the variance you're requesting would be for five point seven feet. For the mountain, mountain avenue, front yard.
Not for the Locust.
No, you don't need that, right?
Right.
You're fine in Locust.
Yeah, you're within, so, we're, you're still right, that right now, we're looking at a single variance.
Yes, to me, I, I just, I know it's, it's, the front yard's already established, so to me, it should be just this way, we shouldn't have to worry about that.
There's two front yards.
The town says it's a corner lot.
I know, it's a corner lot, but I just, to me, when you're gonna establish a house, that's when that should count.
Yeah.
The way I'm looking at it, this is already established, this is already the front yard, everything's built toward the front yard, so it should be a rear yard. Matter of fact, they should be looking for not here, because the house is already here. I was always under the impression, as long as I was on a board.
If you're in a corner, if you're in a corner lot.
Yes, you have two, but you're building, you could decide which is what.
Because you, you want, you want the feeling of the, of the yard space to be.
But what you need to decide, what you need to decide is whether this is a front or a rear, or a rear or a side, or a rear or a side. This has to be a front, those two have to be fronts.
All right.
And, Shelley, to jump ahead, I had, I had, uh.
On your conformance.
On the, on the conformance worksheet, I'm showing the rear yard from Mountain View, considering Mountain View as a front. The rear yard associated with that front should be twenty, and is only sixteen point seven. Again, that's the existing house, doesn't have anything to do with our addition, that's this here.
Right.
But is that, isn't that a side yard, or is that a?
Well, it's a rear yard from Mountain.
It's a rear yard from Mountain, but there's no new construction.
Correct.
Right.
Within that, so, you know, it's, it's, this is grandfathered in, so we don't have to address it.
Well, well, but the bay is grandfathered in then, too.
What?
The bay is also grandfathered in.
If the bay is grandfathered in, then we don't have to deal with anything. If the bay is grandfathered in, then we don't have to deal with anything.
The bay is existing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been there.
But, but this is not existing, right here.
Just that part there.
Oh, okay.
This part here is existing, this is not.
That's over the dash line.
Right.
But no.
And so, okay, so that's...
That's...
Yeah, but we're still, it's still going to be a five point, five point seven, because it's new.
No, it would only be twenty-three point, one point five. Or one point sev, one point seven.
Hey, because it was twenty-five, it's twenty-three five.
Yes.
So it's one point...
In a situation like this, haven't we normally granted the variance to include all of the existing building?
Yeah, we've included all the grandfather's stuff.
If the new...
So that it lists everything and gets that documented.
Yeah, in other words, it's best to go with, you're right, we have done the most conservative. I mean, we could do it the other way and we would be okay, we'd be acceptable, but to do it this way, it's the most conservative.
In that we're acknowledging, we're granting the variance for even the pre-existing stuff.
But that, I think that's actually in the best interest of the owner, too.
That's a benefit to everybody.
To have everything legalized.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't allow you to, to build something other than what you've shown us.
Right.
Because agreeing to that in light of, you know, because it's the all...
So we can't, we can't suddenly make the whole addition come out to the nineteen...
No, you can't.
It's only this forefront.
Because these, these get stamped.
Right.
These get stamped, and, and this is what...
Understood.
The inspector, that, when they go through inspections, this is what they have to meet.
Yeah, but if you want to do that, you could apply for that.
No, nothing here.
That's true.
More work.
Now, wait, as a matter of fact, the addition was larger once, a few months ago, but we pared it down, went clo, went past, but that's not useful.
So we're looking for, it's going to be...
We're still, we're still going to go with five point seven.
Yep.
So keep that.
To, to...
You're right, to go from the, from the, from the...
The bay window.
Yeah, the bay window, so five point seven.
So twenty-five yards to the back, on the mountain side. Everything else is within setbacks or pre-existing.
Mm-hmm.
With no, with no new construction related to it.
So that means we're choosing Cedar as the backyard?
Doesn't make any difference, does it?
No, because the new construction is all...
The garage is, is already there.
It's, are you sure?
What, is this wall already there?
Yes. That actually was legalized, I think, maybe as process of this, in, close to the time of the sale, if not...
What was that?
This, uh, existing brick wall. Maybe it was, that's in, I could dig that paperwork out, but, well, it didn't have anything to do with me, but they did, the owner, new owners passed it on to me.
It's existing, right?
Currently, yes.
Oh, is, yeah. But this wall was recently built?
Well, it's recent as in, you know, our lifetime.
Our lifetime, yeah.
But if it's not before nineteen seventy-two, is what we decided, is that we can...
No, I don't think it's before nineteen seventy.
And, and it's over forty feet, I'm assuming?
Uh, yeah. Does it, I don't have it noted online, but maybe Glenn does.
Grandfathered in.
Yeah.
It wouldn't add to the confusion.
Are you, are you tearing it down?
No.
It's just there for, to keep the squirrels on your side of the wall.
I'm not sure why they built it on the square.
Could be to keep the water away from the garage, to find, find handball.
There wa, there was a permit in nineteen ninety-eight, apparently, excuse me, it says here, it says here, four foot by thirty-five foot brick wall. This was from the, you know, when they did the search.
There's a permit, yeah, I don't know, four by... It's four by thirty-five, so...
There.
Yeah, we don't need to worry about it, that's good. So just a minor change to, to the site plan.
Certainly.
Is there enough dimensions here? You were talking about dimensions and all this stuff.
Um, yes, because I thought that it would be, uh, would be beneficial to have the dimensions of the buildings on the plans.
But, you know, in, in this, she has dimensions of the new.
She does have the dimensions of the new.
The new, I don't, I don't, I don't, I, you know, in what we're dealing with, I'm not sure if we really need a dimension of the existing.
No, I don't, I don't.
Other, other than, other than, you know, the...
She got overlaid, she got it on here, right?
How did you, how do you, but nobody ever gives us exactly how many different numbers, to be honest.
Um, well, we have...
I mean, Donald, Donald said there, you can do it.
I, I will, I will say, because since you asked me and I gave you the wrong answer, it wouldn't seem as though we had included the covered porches, but the existing covered porch is a hundred and forty-five square feet, and the proposed covered porch is two hundred and forty-three, so, um...
It's additional.
So I did add that into, just the covered porch.
Where's the existing covered porch?
There isn't, there isn't an existing covered, oh, in the front, there's an existing covered porch.
So what is your lot coverage, just, I, it can't be anywhere close to the...
No, it's only twenty, it looks like twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, I'm just curious.
Nineteen by nine point eighteen, yeah, so...
Anywhere close to it.
You've got that, all that incline, you know, the hill.
It's pretty steep.
Yeah, very steep.
So, you meet in two weeks, anybody feel that we're not ready to move forward?
I think we're ready. I think, I think we should be straight forward.
Okay, and that's what I kind of thought it would be. It's just, again, we're just, we're niggling, we're niggling on, just make sure our numbers agree, moving forward.
Four new plans with covered.
With the printed, with the shading.
On the new ones, the rest of them we'll just cover.
Okay.
And you gotta send out the notices.
And I do that, correct?
Yeah, I, I'll go write a notice tomorrow to the PCNR, and I will send you a copy. Yeah, I got your again, because I used to send you on this in general, right? Okay, so when I send them, I will send you...
I print it out.
You print it out, and that's, and that's what you do.
With the green, the little green thing, send it to the meeting.
You don't get any responses?
Do we, do we feel a need for an elevation, or not? I mean, I'm, it, it was informed tonight, I don't know if you could just, actually, if you bring it for the public to look at and if anybody has any questions.
Yeah.
But I don't think in terms of the application, that it's gonna...
This is, because this is a one-story addition, right?
Yeah.
And it's behind a two-story house, so it's not, it's not the same as the things you've been dealing with.
Yeah, so for, for our...
Not gonna lose their sight of the mountain.
For our needs, for our needs, I don't think we need it, bring it, bring it...
In the case, in the case anybody in the, in the public wants to see it.
I, I will say that I had aid or whatever copies of the whole set printed, but then I read the application again, and I saw you said you didn't want access stuff.
Well, I mean, technically, we don't care about elevations.
But I, I'm, only thing is I had them, like, given to you.
Yeah, well, but, you know, we never know what the public's gonna want to see, and worth it, right, so it's only going to happen this...
Really, ninety percent of the meetings the public don't show up anyway.
Right.
So did you, you'll send out six of those notices, you might get one or two persons that come.
If they're responding.
They'll respond, and they'll say, yeah, I like it, others sit there, won't say anything.
Well, that's wonderful, because I've been in some really contentious meetings.
We've had, we've had a few.
We've had it in the United States, yes.
The back part of the house is only going to be one story total, it's done.
Yes.
Right, because we're not adding one story on top of it.
No, it's just...
And you're, they're tearing, you're tearing the whole thing down, rebuilding?
Uh, down to the foundation, let's say, the existing.
The entire house?
Oh, no.
Just, just the, just the...
Oh, my goodness, it's a beautiful old house.
It's a great old house, yeah.
Oh, no, just this one-story business in the back.
Okay.
And between you and me, I would love to, I'd love to restore more, it really is a special old house.
It's a beautiful house, yeah, it's a great old house.
They're not, they're not adding to it.
I think that was Dr. Genesi's house.
Was a doctor, yeah, a dentist, yes.
A dentist.
Oh, really?
Yes.
The front, because the front room, I understand, was the, was the...
Dr. Genesi, there for years.
And just to be clear, the, the people who bought the house, their daughter and son-in-law live right down the Locust Ridge with four kids, and he, I've forgotten his, his last name, he has the industrial arts room in Garnaville, and that's, they're local, and they, the reason they want to be here is for the kids.
That's great.
So, yeah.
I didn't know that, that, yeah, the, the, this, I, I forgot that that guy lived on the Locust Ridge, the guy from industrial arts.
Yeah, I've forgotten, it's just gone completely out of my mind.
O'Neill.
Yeah.
So, two weeks is eight seventeen.
And, and when do the notices need, what, how much time?
Yeah.
Like, if they go out tomorrow?
Well, I, that's fine.
Or Saturday?
Yeah, they can go out Monday, you know.
Even Monday, I mean, you know.
I would not push it past there, because it's...
The only thing is, I have to have it to PCNR by Monday morning, nine, yeah, because it's going to be a five-day notice for legal notices.
Okay.
So that's the reason I'll, I'll do it tomorrow, I guess, I don't know.
Well, it's only six, I, I, you know, or whatever, I...
No, it's just I have, I have to write the notice so that the firm issues semi-reason.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to run and make copies of this one set of minutes that's been raging around since February.
Are we done?
We're done with it.
We're done, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You closing it?
Nope, we got minutes left.
Thank you.
Lots of minutes.
I don't have a lot of minutes.
Yeah.
They wanted to look up.
They wanted to look at the, uh, oh, no, please.
But before you got there, they had a pretty colored brick, and the color, they, they put it out there on the porch. And it's just like, making an addition. It was, it was, it was wearing. It wasn't, that's what we were looking at, but all it was, was a portion.
Did, did that go in, I don't know.
I think it did, I'm not sure.
But he couldn't walk at the time.
Yeah. One for you, and then we'll get, have some other ones. One for you, and one for you. This is from February, so take your time and read through February.
Oh, I can't read Jimmy's last name either, that's the, the guy from Silverstone.
Oh, Jimmy, yeah. We ended up not having, not having to make a decision on that.
Is that, that's right, we did.
Because this was, this was a workshop, I think.
Well, he's still working on it.
He's still working, yeah.
He's still doing it, it just, it went in such a way that we didn't have to...
He was only presenting, he did.
He ended up putting a steel beam in there.
Is that what he did?
Well, because years ago, somebody took out two center pillars.
That'll do it, that'll do it, yeah.
Yeah.
A big, big problem, yes.
Yep.
Take, I just had to do this for one reason, and then you're screwed and you want to do something else, yeah.
So I can't read these, I would have to...
Yeah, yeah, this is good.
But the three of us are here, right? So we, we have a quorum to...
Right.
That's all right.
I can't read them.
You can read them, you can read them, but, yeah, okay, I, I moved that we approve the, um, the February second minutes.
There's just, I'll, I'll second before we vote, it's spoon singular.
Spoon singular, right, yeah.
Okay.
We gotta put in Jimmy's name.
We gotta get in Jimmy's name, I can, I can find that.
Okay.
Uh, where's, where's spoon singular?
It's in the second line, after, after the underlying space there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so, he's accepted, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've passed the two...
Two.
Two...
The two-two.
The two-two, I thought it was two twenty-one, but, as, as amended, so let's look...
And then I, I moved that we approved the six, the June first minutes, you know, I don't have, I was near for the last one, so...
That's all two-two. No frick here.
So I moved that we approved the, and that was, all of us were there.
I didn't see that one.
Thank you. I can't look at this, because I just hear. Is this somebody's...
So you've sent, Tom, you've sent these by email?
I couldn't attach them to the email for some reason, that's why I printed them out.
I'm sorry?
They wouldn't attach to an email for some reason, so I printed them out, I don't know what that was about, but...
Yeah, because I, I still need electronic copy, because I need to add, I need to add, you know, it's the, my signage at the bottom. I mean, I'll do that, I'm not going to make you, you know, this is for Tom.
Okay.
So, can I have a motion on six one?
I move.
Second?
What's up?
Okay, I'll leave seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven twenty, do I have a motion on those?
I didn't see seven twenty.
We're seven twenty.
I can't.
Oh, she can. Let me make sure, present for me, Aaron Elliott. Yeah, we have him, okay. So, take five minutes. Do I have a second? Do you need a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so, thank you, Tom, appreciate that.
It's seven.
But if, why wouldn't, why wouldn't they attach?
I have no idea, this, I was having the same problem with the last code update minutes that day, there must be a problem with Gmail.
What's his last name? Hondo, I mean?[1720.62]